Hey guys, coming up, I'm excited to report to you, we've taken our first shots here at 30NL. Not a lot of history, but we had a pretty good little session, want to show you how we got started. Alright, so I made a promise to myself when I moved up in stakes, we're taking some shots at 30NL, that I would go back and review every hand I played to just start. So the goal here is we're gonna play one, a little bit here, I played two tables. We're gonna go back and review every hand we VPip, every hand where we voluntarily put money in the pot, we're gonna go back and review. So, a couple of quick notes, a lot of people are gonna wonder, how much different is this than 10NL? And yeah, in limited history, I'd say not a lot. Uh, I'd say so far, I think the games play very similar. Uh, I think the very best players are probably a little bit better than the 10NL. And the guys that are, you know, VPipping in the 70% range are kind of naturally weeded out, they just don't make it this far. But all the regs and all the other guys are pretty much the same, you're still seeing a lot of loose stats, a lot of, you know, 30%, VPIP, 40%. So definitely, uh, seems so far again to be beatable, so. Uh, other thing we got here is we have a lot of new players that we don't have history on, a lot of guys you see here in the HUD stats, like one hand, four hands, so. A lot of guys we just gotta try to play like fundamentally sound against, because we don't have stats to make an exploitative play, so. Let's run through here, let's get started, so here we are in hijack pocket twos. Open from the lowjack. I don't know what I was thinking there, so I don't necessarily love it, I mean, I love the aggression of it. Um, I think I was probably perhaps just a little nervous sitting in here in a little bit bigger game for the first time and got a little bit carried away. Uh, this is a villain I have a decent amount of history, I guess with, well, 150 hands is something, uh, that's gotta be the 10NL. So, he's folding a three bet 70% of the time, so I certainly prefer this. Uh, well, I'm sorry, it's not a three bet, he limped, so. Over the limp, he's only limping folding 21% of the time, so he's probably just not gonna fold out enough here where this is a strong play. Uh, normally I would not open pocket twos in the hijack, so. Uh, if you set up, um, you can certainly make a lot of money in a situation like this, so it's probably a little loose, this is probably a fold. Uh, I definitely like the, the raise here over the call behind, I'll say, just because at this level, I've already told, um. Already seen the guys a little bit more aggressive in terms of squeezing, and you really don't want that. So, I get a call behind me, which isn't great. Calling the big blind, calling the lowjack, so this is a, uh, if you hit a set, great, if you're not, you gotta get out of there. Queen 4-4, check, oh, checked on a bet, half pot bet, you just gotta get out of here. Um, we'll click through and see what he shows down, I, I'd be, I think nearly 100% of the time, this guy would hit a queen, if he's gonna lead like that. Um, I don't even know from a limping range on lowjack, even though he's wide, what fours he has, unless it's exactly ace four and it's tough. He checks. Well, I mean, we were, we were still dead here, but it's interesting to see, he led that very poorly, um. You should not lead an under pair here in that type of board unless you're really just trying to bluff and think you, and tell someone you had a four, so. Uh, our play there was correct, interesting play by villain, but let's keep moving. Uh, pocket aces, actually got these a couple of times yesterday, I don't think any of these were particularly big hands, but. Let's look at them, so, raise on the button to 90, so again, you have six hands on the villain, he's not crazy so far. Definitely think this is a three bet spot, you could be three betting light here from the button, uh, I'm sorry, from the big blind against the button raise, so. Your range here is not necessarily skewed towards pure value. So I three bet and make about three and a half times X, probably should've gone four times, but, um, try not to. I don't know this guy, he doesn't know me, and I'm not trying to give an overwhelming show of power. He does call, alright, interesting, so he's called a three bet. Queen 6-4, two diamonds, we have an overpair. Um, backdoor nut flush draw, and certainly the nut flush, uh, the diamond blocker. He certainly has a reasonable number of queens in his range, uh, he still probably has the ace queens that we don't block, king queen. Sometimes queen jack suited, uh, he could have some pairs like a jacks or tens or nines that call a bet, particularly if a diamond in there. So, I, I do think this is a mandatory c-bet. Probably gonna throw about a third of the pot, because this is a board we're gonna bet fairly frequently, so somewhere around 225. Yep. Um, I do do these, these odd amounts here specifically, just to make it harder for guys to just realize that it's a third pot, I don't know if it's, it actually works, but I like it, so. Uh, alright, and he folds, and that's fine, and you know, it's unfortunate he didn't have a king queen or something though, we could've extracted a lot of value there, but we played it correctly. Uh, 8-7 suited on the button. Raise from lowjack, fold, call from hijack, so. This is one of the spots here where if it was a lower level game, this is probably a pretty good squeeze spot. I don't know anything on the, the lowjack, the initial opener, other than in 10 hands, this is second open, I guess? He's VPip in 11, so, you know, that's not a lot of history, but he seems tight-ish. Uh, this guy here is, you know, calling behind with 46% of hands, so I would love to squeeze and get him out. Because I don't know enough about the initial guy with the history on him to. To three bet, and if I face a four bet, I have to fold, so I don't think this is the time to do it. Alright, so I do call behind. Alright, pretty good flop, so, let's see what happens here, so we have obviously backdoor flush draw. It's a non-nut flush draw, and you're only showing down eight high at this point though, so if it checks. If it checks to me, I'm certainly betting, um, if I face a third pot or half pot bet, I probably still raise it. Um. Just to try to get whatever fold equity and stuff I can now, realizing a, a, a board like this connects pretty well with a lowjack's opening range, it's gonna be a lot of big cards and pairs. So, let's see what happens. So it checks to me, so, um. When two players check like that, particularly the lowjack, I mean, with the two guys behind him, he's probably not gonna see bet at the frequency that he would if he was in position. Um. If he had a king, you figured he would bet, if he had a jack, he may even bet, prob- probably, possibly not of the two people, but if he had a strong hand, I think he would've bet it. So, I definitely want to continue here, because, or I definitely want to bet here, because I have no showdown value if this thing checks down. Um. Probably about half pot, maybe a dollar sixty, right around there. I go a dollar twenty, perhaps a little small, just because I think we're trying to generate some fold equity here, and going a little bit bigger will help accomplish that. And also will build a bigger pot for when we do it. A call and a fold, alright. So, when you check calls, I mean, he certainly could have, I think about the good hands he could have, he could have pocket king that he's trapping with. Um, I think even like a two pair, like a king jack is in his range, I think he probably leads out on that, or c-bets that. Uh, should he have jacks, I think he c-bet second set. Um. So, he, he could just have something like queen jack, ace jack, that he's just wanted to check call second pair. Um, so we can certainly put pressure on that, depending on what happens, so. Now we turn to additional equity to pick up a gut shot with our hand. So it is the bottom end of the gut shot, so I don't want to overvalue that, um. If a 10 comes, uh, then a single queen gets there actually, so the gut shot doesn't help you too much, you're really hoping for that diamond. Uh, also means the 10 of diamonds is probably one less, one less potential out for you, hurting your flush draw a little bit, so. Probably at this point, I should just check behind and hope to get there on the river. Um, if he called, if for some reason he just checked a king, because I don't know this guy, he's not gonna fold to another bet. He probably doesn't fold if he is queen jack, or jack ten or something, he's not gonna fold now, he's a gut shot, so it's probably a good spot to just check behind and see the free river. Alright, I bet. Alright, I mean, I bet and he folds, so, um, I probably would've taken the free river. With eight high, it's never bad firing that next barrel, uh, especially when you can get your opponent to fold. Uh, I just don't think against, with 10 hands against a villain, that, that. I have enough history to say definitively, this is. That I expect him to fold here if I fire a second barrel, particularly in one that's a little less than half pot, I mean, hey, I'm happy it worked out. In retrospect, that is probably a check and, and try to get there. Alright. Whoop, skip the hand. Alright, ace six suited, raise it up. Call from the big blind. Queen 4-4, two diamonds, we have the nut flush draw. Check to us, so, it's a board you're gonna bet a lot. It's, this guy so far has played relatively tight, so I don't think he has many fours, is that probably just an ace four suited, and there's only, well, there's two of those left. He, he may not play a 5-4, 6-4, 4-3, something like that, and if he has them, so be it. It's a board you're gonna check, I'm sorry, it's a board you're gonna c-bet most of the times, you wanna do it small, probably about a third, so somewhere around 70 cents or something would be good. 67, I like my odd numbers, and he folds, that's fine, good, good outcome. King 10 off. So, uh, not a particularly strong hand, you wanna play these things suited, but when you're on the butter and it folds to you though, there's absolutely time to get it in. Uh, alright, both players fold, wonderful. So when you're, when you're getting started in a new game like this though, I like to play a very position-based game, um, when I don't know the players, and I don't know some of the population tendencies at all. Uh, I like to make sure I'm playing as many hands in position as possible, so. Uh, when you're in the button like that, you have an opportunity, take it, so here we got aces, another chance at aces. Raise up in the cutoff, hoping our range looks wide to someone, but we've not played a lot of hands, I don't believe so far. Alright, big blind calls, we got some action. So jack 8-5, probably a range is better for the big blind caller than for us frankly, I mean, he's gonna have a lot of middle cards, he's gonna have more. I have all the overpairs where he shouldn't, he's gonna have a lot of king jack, queen jack, jack ten, jack nine, um, 10-9. Um, well, I mean, I have those hands too from the top actually, so maybe this is actually a, a range neutral board, now that I'm thinking about it. Um, I have the nut advantage, I mean, um, pocket jacks right now are the nuts on this board. I don't, I would think he three bets those pre-flop, again, I don't know the player, but a lot of guys against the cutoff open probably should bet that pre-flop. So you might take that out of his range, so, he checks, um. Probably a board I want to size up on a little bit, just because it's one I think I'm a little less frequent to bet, because it is connected, but we, we do want to bet here, I think you just gotta go up a little bit bigger to probably like 90 cents or a dollar. I've been really hooked on these third pot bets lately, and I gotta kinda stop using that as just an auto sizing, I gotta think through this a little bit, um, like I'm doing here, so if I did this now, I'd probably go about half pot, so I think it's a, a small. Um, error. Alright, he folds, I mean, it didn't hurt us, but you always gotta make sure you're doing everything optimally if you want to succeed in these games. Uh, pocket fives, we're missing the players, we're in hijacks, that isn't open for me. Folds to me, wonderful, never be upset if you just take down the blinds. Queen 10 off in the button, much like that king 10 off is not a crusher of a hand, but somebody open on the button every time. Uh, you have to really think these guys are gonna get after it and three bet your steal attempt, if you're gonna fold a hand this draw. You see, again, they just fold out, so. We don't know these players too much, I mean, the big blind's the one that's the. The big blind's the one that's most likely to call. And he folds the seal 60% of the time, so certainly, even if he defends, queen 10 off suit is high enough up in your stealing range that. You can play that in position, you're fine there, alright. 10-7 of diamonds, folds to me, so. I've been working on some of this kind of small blind strategy against the big blind when it folds down here, and, and. There's all different charts, so if I look at my small blind, or is it small blind opening chart? It's got a real mixed strategy here of what you're supposed to be limping and raising, and it has 10-7 suited here as a limp. But basically, it's just, you know, it's giving you some good hands that you're limping like aces. Some good hands that you're raising like kings, and just almost a random mix on the rest, it's very hard to memorize or to even implement. So, against a guy that so far has, has, um, folded the four out of four steal attempts, I'd probably just raise this to something like a dollar twenty, four big blinds, and, and hope he folds. Uh, if he calls, it's certainly got some playability, even though you don't love being out of position. I do, and he folds. So definitely an exploitative play. I, I'm the kind of guy that uses some of these HUD stats relatively early in a session, meaning, you know, here I only have 26 hands on the guy, but I'm still trying to use the HUD stats to make an exploitative play. Uh, it's a little more aggressive than a lot of people that want 100 or 200 hands to do that, but here we are. So jack 8 offsuit. Well, I, I, I actually think jack 8 offsuit's a little bit of a loose open here. See, if you look here, again, in our button opening range, so it's a single handoff, you would open jack nine off, you would open 10 eight off, so it's right there on the cuff, so it's not terrible here to open this. Clearly I VPipped and, 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 um, tried to steal here. You know, against a player that, that folds the steal 61% of the time, I'd probably like to see that a little higher number. Uh, what did he done this session? Uh, this session he was five for five, and maybe I just realized that and thought this is a good area here. Again, if I have 250 hands, I probably only paid. Forty or fifty hands of 30NL at this point, so. Maybe I also assumed he was out of his league or in a higher level game, and might play cautiously, hey? It worked, but it's always good to go back to your, to your range charts and at least consult them and realize what we did wasn't necessarily out of line. It was just one hand kind of off the cusp of what they recommend. So I know I'm one tabling at this time, and this guy that just folded to our steal with, what was it, 10-7 of diamonds, he's folded all six steal attempts. Um, I'm probably gonna keep trying to steal here until he stops me. Dollar twenty, fold, so we're, we're seven for seven, and those aren't all us trying to steal, but we're seven for seven, so. Yeah, if I got a three bet there, it's an absolute must-fold, uh, if he calls, I'd probably proceed a little bit cautiously, but. Hey, and until you show, until someone shows a proclivity to defend against something though, just keep hammering it, that's how you make money at these games. Kings and hijack, open. Everybody fold is always disappointing, but that's the game. Uh, ace 10 off in the cutoff, well, it's, it's a mandatory open from this position, you certainly want this hand to be suited. Um. Gotta play the cards you're dealt. Big blind defends. Big blind is tight-ish. Alright, so we got second pair on a quite juicy flop there, uh, the flush draw, straight draw, you know, something like a queen will continue, queen jack is certainly a hand, queen 10, queen 9, jack 9, 10-9. All hands that are relatively tight, big blind will have. Um, it doesn't get much wetter of a board than this, so. Um, I'm assuming, excuse me, I'm assuming he checks. Probably this is a pretty nice check behind spot, because our hand is certainly marginal in value, it is not the nuts on this board, and there's a lot of stuff that's gonna connect to like a mid-card range that he might call with. If I do bet, I want to bet on the big side, probably about a dollar forty or something, two-thirds pot, but you want to do that very polarized, and, and this hand's right in the middle of my range, and, and. I don't see that being a good candidate here, I do check behind, so I like that. So a seven, um, I mean, he could have pocket eights, he could have nine eight, ten eight, um. Probably he doesn't seem to play much wider than that, um, maybe an eight seven or eight six, uh, well, no, eight seven was already there. He probably wouldn't have let the flop and could still have it in his range. So, point being is, you know, an eight got there, that is gonna be a problem. Um. Anyway, so he bets 93. Probably at least for a street here, um. It's a one-street defend, I mean, I think I have to call here, but you don't even have top pair. There are two pair combos, he can have the, some of the sets at least. Probably, you don't know him, he probably three bets jacks and tens. Some guys three betting nines from that spot, I've three betting nines from that spot, but if players don't, he's really could have sevens, eights. Maybe this is just a fold and get out of the way. I think I want to fold here, we'll see what I do. I call, and, and, the, the problem here is, there's no good river for you, uh, if he's betting with a draw, I mean, the only draw he's gonna bet with is. Ace queen. Queen 10 that you beat, I mean, there's not a lot of draws here that are going to. That you're ahead of. River's another seven, check, check. I think he's gonna show a queen. Alright, queen jack. A hand that made a lot of sense, and, um, a hand that certainly he probably played correctly. From his standpoint, he should check the flop, he should bet when I check behind on the flop, and he, he probably should check river now that I call, and, and he does not have the nuts, so. Probably a little loose of a call on my part here on the turn. Uh, I don't think terrible, I don't think too far out of kilter, but, but not ideal. Five-four diamonds. Uh, again, it folds to me, this is the guy that's folded the seven steal attempts. So I decided to limp this one behind. I mean, if you, if you look, consult our chart over here. It shows five-four suited as a raise, and again, you could jumble these things, it doesn't necessarily matter, as long as you're mixing up your play, that's fine. After I hammer this guy, it's probably, probably stole against him four times already. You gotta mix it up a little bit, or, or he is gonna catch on eventually and start defending, and, and I don't want him to start defending with a hand quite like this. So, he checks behind, and what happens? So king jack two. Probably just something that you're just checking down, you gotta give up something on the guy. Check, check. So now it's interesting, is you pick up an open and a straight draw, um, if he had a king, you figured he would bet, he might even bet a jack, he might bet hearts. Uh, you have an open-ender, and there's two flush draws out there, so if he had backdoor clubs or something, though, he would certainly get value from. Um. If an ace comes in on the river, he certainly has some ace-high hands that would. Call a river bet, and you're gonna have. Kind of a disguised wheel. So I probably like a lead here somewhere around half pot, 30 cents, which is what I do. He calls. I think it's just to give up, you're too far down in your range. This is just to give up. But, so he, he obviously thinks at that point. Oh, he's in the, he's in the big blind. Um. I mean, he can have almost any two cards, you forget he raised the best ones, because he have any two cards, so. Little loose call on his part probably, but if he saw me raise all those steal attempts and finally flat, he probably realizes I'm not quite at the top of my range. And maybe, hey, maybe we found a, a leak here where he's exploiting us. Uh, playing four-handed here, so we're in cutoff, so ace 10 offsuit is open. Call from button. So 4-8-7, so. I'm, I, so I have all the overpairs, you figured he would probably three bet, again, you don't know the player, but the population with three bet, tens, jacks, queens, kings, aces. Some guys leave in three bet nines and eights, so if he had top set, I mean, that, that. Takes some of the opportunity away from it. He doesn't seem so far like a losing enough player where he's calling behind with like a 5-6, so he probably didn't flop a straight. He may have all the sets, he probably at least has the sevens and the fours, but a lot of what he has is gonna have pairs that miss the board, high cards that miss the board. I think this is, uh, so I have all the, I have eight sevens, fours, I have those in my opening range, so I have all the nuthands. I probably don't have 5-6 here. Let's see what they recommend, then hijack what I open 5-6, I'm sorry, in cutoff. 6-5 is a little bit loose, so I probably don't have that here, I know I typically wouldn't open that. I still say I fire here about a quarter, 80 cents. Yep. He calls. So it's a decent barrel card, it certainly brings a scare card to the board. If he had an eight or a seven, the board just got a lot scarier. Does he, we, we don't know him, would he float over cards on the flop? Would he float a, you figure ace king probably three bets, he hasn't three bet yet, it's 50 hands, so maybe he's not that aggressive. He certainly could call behind with a king queen, king jack, king 10. Even though there'd be two suited comes of king 10. I think it's a good barrel spot, to get up to about half pot, about $2, and kind of barrel on that king, because if he did hit the eight or seven, that's a scare card. If he had a pair of nines or something, that's a scare card. So it's gonna be a little bit bigger, um, about two-thirds pot, so hey, I like that. If he calls here, we're giving up, maybe if we hit an ace on the, on the river, we, we, we try something, but even then, I'm probably happy to check down or check call. And he calls, and now. Now we just lose everything, um, if he had some random six by chance, he got there, if he had backdoor diamonds, he got there, king got there, I mean. We could do a range analysis and see how many flushes he got to the river with, and worth it, whether or not it's worth. Trying to bluff the flush. Um, but is he going to recognize that you have bluffs there? I think it's just a give-up spot, I, I, I'll tell you, against the population of 10NL, guys call down to losing spots like this. Um, I'm going to assume it's the same here until somebody proves me wrong, so I think it's just a checkfold. Check, check. I guess he had the eight. Alright, so we, now we know he flats. Ace king, pre-flop. It's odd on that, that river with the ace of diamonds, who is the nut flush blocker. It's odd that he weren't fire there. Hmm, I would fire there, alright. King queen off. Alright, so. I mean, it's the third hand on the villain, he's played the first two, so I mean, that's not telling you much, I've certainly had, you know, eight hands in a row, I've gotten good cards and just played, but the fact he's playing three hands in a row is probably not a great sign for him. Um. So it's not a call behind spot, I think for the most part, this is a three-better fold. Some of these guys that do these min opens and stuff, or, or min raise opens, just do it, because they don't have a hand they want to invest a lot of money with. I guess from that perspective, I'm probably better off three betting here. Um, if you fold, I don't think that's bad, if you call, I mean, you're leaving yourself open and get squeezed from the blinds. If you hit either top pair, you don't necessarily love it, because you could be dominated by ace king or ace queen. So this is probably a three-better fold. Against a new table where I probably want to establish some dominance, I'd probably three bet. I do call, and I don't know that I love it, um. I do think, for, for most of the part here, that's a three-better fold. Let's see what our charts here say, so we're, we're checking against raise, facing a raise first in, in position. Button versus lowjack, king queen off. Is a three bet, alright, so just one point of reference saying, uh, that was likely a mistake, and. That's why we do this reviews, you pick up countless valuable knowledge in this stuff, so. Yep, almost hellstrated it, now the big blind squeezes, he calls. Oh man, getting three to one. I mean, I think you have to fold, I hope I fold, alright, I do fold, good. Interesting to see what three bet he showed down. What did I? What, I fold king queen? So I had the king, blocker, I mean. Check bet. Check bet, I mean, I don't think he has a real strong hand either, he has a pair or something and not a flush. And he bets pot on river. Do you have a set, sevens or sixes? I don't think you play a flush that way. A set that he was scared of, and he got to river and thought it was good? Ah, alright. So I mean, it's, it's a hand you would've won, um, hey, you can't look at it that way, this guy made a bizarre set of plays. Clearly not a hand, I expected him to see him. To see that, so this guy had jacks. Reasonable three bet on his part, that's fine, pro- absolutely looking at this though, you should have. These guys calling a three bet with eight-six offsuit, so absolutely something we should've three bet pre-flop. It's in his player notes, call three bet in position, eight-six off, alright, hopefully I see that next time and adjust. Well, alright, queens, glorious. Same guy, and open, a call. Excellent squeeze spot, wanna go about 4X, about 240, lovely. So this guy's calling with all kinds of junk. And we are calling here, so you don't love. You don't love going three ways, you're in position. Uh, queens aren't, aren't much different than aces, when a lot of money goes in the pot, you're honestly going to love it, when a little money goes in the pot, though, you're in absolutely great shape, so. Oh, what two, does this guy have any twos? I mean, he certainly has ace two. I don't think he's playing another two, both players probably have pocket sevens, neither should have seven-two. I mean, it's hard to flop a full house, uh, both these guys have in their range, but this guy has so many hands in this range, and I think this guy does too. Check, check. Well, mandatory c-bet, you're hoping to get floated by, um, you know, a seven X, um. A random pair, eights or nines, sixes, five fours, whatever, so you can't go real big. Probably a third pot, you know, two fifty-ish. Two sixty-two. Folds out, so, both these guys probably had random ace jacks, king jacks, queen jack. King queen, something like that, that went and, and missed, or they had a small pair and didn't set up and got out of the way, so. Alright, four-six of hearts. So, there's not a real loose guy, so this is a guy in his first hand, this is a. So there's not a real loose guy. So this is a guy in his first hand. This is a player here, you know. You're getting five to one here. Uh, I'm gonna play a suited one gapper for the big blind in that condition every time. Uh, it's not a great board. I guess it's not terrible. It's probably just a board where if guys are playing high cards, especially against someone that you don't know, we'll just. All assuming he has a king and get out of the way. Checks through. Alright, do we pick up equity? We do not pick up equity. Yeah, he's just gonna fold there. It's okay. We're getting good odds and we tried. So a nines, raise it. Call behind from a so far tight player. Alright, I remember this hand, cause I discussed this with somebody after I played it. Another situation where there's a super wet flop, uh, we have a very strong hand. We do not necessarily have the nuts. Um, I don't know if this guy's wide enough to play a jack eight. Um, he certainly may call behind with sevens, which you extract a lot of value from. Eights, which is an open ender, uh, could even have the eight or hearts in there for an open ender and a backdoor flush. He certainly has ten, nine, at least the suited com- the two suited combos of that. He may, probably doesn't have nine, seven. He'd have jack, ten, queen, ten, king, ten, ace, ten. So it's a board you're not gonna bet on very frequently, so because when you do bet it, you wanna go big and by big, I mean probably a dollar. Forty dollar fifty, two thirds pot. I know I don't do that here. I think I bet around forty percent pot. Yeah, and I think that is a mistake. Um, on a board like this, um. It, it's just so polarizing. Either you, when you bet it, you have to have something. Um, or you have to have a buffer or a draw. So I think here you gotta go about a dollar fifty. So I think I gave. The opponent here too good of a price to call down with a variety of draw hands. And he calls, fine. So five of diamonds, should he have something? Uh, should he have, you know, a jack, nine of diamonds? Which would have called the flop. He certainly picked up additional equity there. Uh, it didn't make any hand. I mean, eight, six was already there. It didn't make anyone's hand. There's not a logical, well, you're beating a two pair, so if he made seven, five or something, then that's awesome. Doesn't change anything. So again, this is a board where if I want to bet, I want to bet big. I probably wanna bet around two eighty or three dollars and I don't think I'd do that. I think I go small. I think it's a little bigger than last time. At least it's over half pot, um. I think you wanna go even bigger on these things and, and be polarized, cause you would bet this with some of your draws. Uh, now you have to bet it with your nuttish hands. And he calls. So right now, you can put him on a draw. You can say he has hearts. He could have a combo draw, like a jack, ten or hearts, something like that. Makes a lot of sense. He could also just be bad. I mean, you don't have enough history in the guy, the fact that he's playing relatively tight in eleven hands. You have no history to say that he's a good or a bad player. Um, so again, I think the mistake here was not betting bigger on the flop in the turn. Yeah, that's the worst card for me. It's the worst possible card for me. Completed the backdoor flush. Uh, single jack got there, so if he had jack, ten or some of them, he got there with the straight. This is just a terrible card. So. I know what I do here and I bet. You have to check here. When the. Flush like this completes the obvious flush and some of the obvious straights get there. You have to just check. Your set is now marginal made hand. You probably have to just check fold here. If he bets real small. Just cause the guy might do that with two pair. If he bets a quarter pot or something, that you're probably just. Kinda got thrown the crying call. This should be a check and I think I bet about third pot. Uh, alright, it's like forty percent pot, even sized down, that would give him. Well, they had a flush and betting two thirds pot or something here, three quarters pot, um, if they actually made it. So not only am I betting when my hand's not strong relative to the board, but I'm also giving a sizing indicator that I don't have the nuts. And I remember. He raises, nothing I can do here but fold. So I think the mistake here was not betting bigger on the flop in the turn. Um, and when it got to the river. I should have checked. I should have realized my hand had just now become marginal in value and checked, so. It's the hand I flagged and reviewed immediately and, and that's okay. Um, you gotta learn. You're gonna make mistakes here and, and despite the fact that mistakes here in this session, this was a profitable first shot at thirty and L, so, hey. Live and learn. Ace three suited. Uh, this is a hand you probably wanna mix up a little bit. I don't mind calling behind. I think our, our charts will probably tell us to three better or fold this. Um, so let's look, cutoff versus low jack. Cut off versus low jack, so it just has ace three suited as a fold. Um, I actually personally don't mind trying to. Call behind with some of these suited connectors, just really flop so well, the suited aces. Um, against a guy opening a bunch of hands, it's not folding to that many three bets, it's probably just a fold. I call behind there, that's fine. Not a good board for anybody's range, probably, um. I have more hands to connect with this than he should. But a guy playing this many hands, it's up to the terrain to put into a board like this. Gotta just check behind. Hope your ace high is good. So now he picked up a pair, but a, but a flush draw came in, a single four has a straight. So he bets half pot a little more and you just have to fold. Straight forward enough. Queen ten off. Again, as I said, not a monster hand. You consider folding just cause this guy is new and seems to. Call behind quite a bit at thirty-one zero. I mean, you don't really have an indication this guy's gonna fold if you try to steal. But, alright, yeah, you gotta follow a. Even though he had called, there is no proclivity to raise so far. I mean, if you three bets, you have to get out of the way. Uh, if he does just flat call, I mean, even a hand that does okay in position, so you can navigate that. Ace, queen, fold, raise it up. Fold, call from the small blind. Who should not have much of a flattening range. I guess the cutoff's open and a fold, alright. So who's more nines? It's a good question. I mean, I have a lot of ace, nine. I probably have some, um, I might have king nine, at least the suited ones. I have queen nine, jack nine, ten, nine, nine, eight. Probably some nine, seven. He has a lot of those same hands. So in terms of the actual nuts here, we probably have a similar amount of nines. Um, I have the nut flush blocker, so it's gonna be hard for him to have diamonds. He's not calling, you know, again, it's nineteen hands, but he's not calling, so why do you expect him to have, you know. Five, three of diamonds here. I don't see him calling that from the small blind. He certainly shouldn't. So he may have a pair or some, some big cards. You're just blocking so many big card combinations, the diamonds, that you're probably safe there. So assuming it checks to me, again, I would bet about a third pot. Check, seventy-five or so, lovely. So you get a call, so I mean, it's hard for him to have a nine, um, certainly. If you had a nine, you gotta think it's a good check race spot with the flush draw out there. So because the nine of diamonds is on the board, you obviously can't have the nine of diamonds. So he can't have ace, nine of diamonds, cause I have that. He can't have nine, ten of diamonds, nine, eight of diamonds. So it's more likely he has. A flush draw. Or another pair. He's blocking so many flush draws. I'm thinking he has a pair. Either he's a three and he picked up random ace, three or something though, that, that he's just playing weird and rolled for, for, folded for the barrels. Or he has some like middling pocket pair, seven, sixes. Something like that, that, that we'll call one street. Four shouldn't help him. We still have all the over pairs where he shouldn't. I think he's a good double barrel spot. Size up a little bit, get this guy at about two dollars. Check. So I bet, I just think when you're going to double barrel specifically. You know, you're, you're doing this as a bluff. You do not really beat anything in his value range that is calling. So when you do that, you gotta size up a little bit to make yourself look polarized. Um, so I think again, you know, two dollars, something's a better bet than one fifty. Two fifty is probably a better bet than two dollars. You wanna put some pressure on him. And he calls. And he checks. Do you ever bluff the flush? I mean, you have the ace, um. I, I mean, checking here and giving up is okay. He obviously has a hand that's not going to fold. I don't think to this river, you know, eight, seven, sixes, fives fold. I mean, tens and dax aren't gonna fold. Uh, if he had one of those hands. With a diamond in it, I mean, that cuts down the number of diamond combos you would have. I think you go either way. I'm fine with checking and give up. Uh, if I do bet, I wanna go pretty big, probably around. Four fifty? What do we choose? Five forty, even bigger, lovely. Well, no, I don't mind the sizing and if you're gonna polarize it. That's a good size to pick. Considering you're blocking all the flush combos, it's not a bad play. It's just, we don't know this guy and is a guy keep, at this level capable of folding. He's not gonna fold to nine. He's gonna fold something like pocket eights. Who knows with this guy? He does call. I guess eight, sevens or sixes with a diamond. Alright, so a hand outside of his range, just based on the small sample size we had with him, that's a little loose. Particularly in the small blind, it's a loose call, so I, I guess it is what it is. I don't know that her play was incorrect. Trying to think if he could have done anything differently here. I mean, you could obviously check the river, cause it looks like a hand that he's not giving up, but. As I said, you know, a pair of pocket eights is calling down that way too and, and may give up on a, on a diamond river. Uh, particularly when a five creates a straight, so I, I don't think that was a bad bluff spot, actually. Alright, move on. So when I see a guy limp from under the gun, well, I mean, it's low jack in this, hijack, I'm sorry, in this scenario, so. It's not as likely as the undergun player to have aces, but you know, just remember when a guy limps like this, though, some portion of his range can be aces. Well, I never flat call here, uh, from the small blind. I'm always gonna raise this or fold. Um, I'm fine raising two Broadway cards here against a tight player and somebody that. Uh, just limping too many hands. I'm fine raising that to probably five X here, a dollar fifty. Good. Alright. I mean, again, we don't know what this guy's limp calling with. You're out of position here. You've not hit the board with anything. Um. Well, yeah, again, you can check or you can bet small. It's a board where he's not likely to have headed. I mean, he has the pairs, you know. Sixes and fives aren't gonna fold. I don't mind a third pot bet and just trying to see if I can get over cards, just like what I have to fold. Um, certainly, you know, I have aces, kings, queens and stuff in my range, where he certainly should not limp call with them. Um, some of the players aren't going to realize that. So I do just check, check, fine. Well. If I was gonna bet there, I think, I mean, a, a C bet on the flop is probably just gonna be a, a little bit easier. Um, you fold probably the same hands out. Without allowing another card to come, cause if an ace had come or something, though, I'm, I'm stuck there. Thankfully it was a low card and, and we got one through. Ace two suited on the button, fold, fold, another man with three open. So a tight player again, new player, tight guy, call small blind. Oh, wow. I mean, we're hoping for a ten right here, then he doesn't have an ace, so we're chopping. So this is a check down situation. Check, check. Bet, get out of there, alright. Uh, jack, ten of diamonds, good suited connector. So here villain raises four X, uh, again, someone I probably have ten N L experience with. Um, he steals thirty-one percent of the time. He steals from. Small blind only eighteen percent of the time, or button forty-eight, which is interesting to see. You can't. Oh, how do I show his hand? I'm not even sure I did that. Um, definitely a situation where if you realize that. In, in real time, it's a, a spot where you want to be calling here in position. I think the call is still fine. Not a place where you want to. Uh, three bet. You could also, nah, this is too strong to fold. I think the call here is the correct play. Alright. Oh. See, I should be calling behind here with a decently wide range with small blind steel in position, so I could certainly have a lot of club hands, uh, ace high club hands. Pairs with a club in it. I could have a lot of those in my range and we, we see. Villain's hand, he clearly doesn't, so it may actually be a check spot for him. So that puts me in a tough spot, cause I have the open-ended straight draw, nine, ten, jack, queen. It's hard to flop a flush. I don't block any of these flushes, obviously, but with the open-ended straight draw here, I think you have to call at least one street. You have to call a street and reevaluate. Now you turn second pair. He bets again, you know, forty percent pot or so. I mean, you have a open-ended straight draw. You now have a lot of showdown value in the ten. I mean, he could have aces and kings. He could have queens. He could have. Um, maybe queen, ten, queen, nine, pocket tens, pocket nines. You can have a lot of these hands that you beat. But between the open-ended straight draw and the pair, I think this is a mandatory call. Which I do. And the three. So you, you missed your straight draw. Question is, how often did he flop a flush? Yeah, flopping a flush is very difficult to do. I guess in three percent of the time or something, though, he has hands here that flop a flush. How often does he have aces, kings or a queen? Sometimes, uh, I mean, if he's opening exactly an eighteen percent range, let's go over here. Let's just, you know, again. Mock up what eighteen percent looks like. Something like that, let's just say, we'll go with that. Um. How many queens does he have? Well, he has some. He could have pocket queens in a flop top set. He could have that. He could have some. Uh, four combos of ace, queen. Well, actually, let's plug in. The board here quick. Five, nine, queen. You really put a range in for me. Let's just deal with the flop here. So this guy here. Well, make him, do that, alright. This guy here only flops a flush, alright, five percent of the time. So whenever every twenty times this board comes out, this guy has a flush. How many top pairs does he have? Top pair, you know, eighteen percent of the time he had top pair. Um, twenty-eight percent of the time he had a flush draw and a flush draw that didn't get there. So there's a lot of hands he has here that are not. A queen. Um, so look, top pair plus over pairs, so twenty-four percent of the time he has an actual hand that probably beats you here. Um, I'm looking into the flop, cause I don't feel the turn of the river probably changes much. I mean, he has some pocket tens that again may bet this flop, especially with a spade in it. Um, I think this is a call. I do call, see his bluff. Alright, not. I don't know, out of position, that's a spot I want to triple barrel. Um, I think this is a good call down by me. Um, so you guys can certainly give an opinion if you think that's a little loose if a call. Alright, eight, six. Am I clicking a guy's cards? Did they just show? Not sure I got them to pop up in the last hand. Open from the button, folds around, great. How many more we got here? We got, nah, we're all still, uh, we got a bunch. This is gonna be a long video. Um, alright. So four-handed fools the small blind, who raises the seventy, two and a half X. He's stealing fifty percent. I mean, he's only seventy-seven hands. Stealing from small blind, hitting seven percent, so. You can call and just know you're ahead of his range, but probably it's a spot I like to three bet and just try to take it down. He's folded every three bets so far, all, well, all one of them. Probably I just wanna three bet to two twenty-five and. Get it done. Alright, happy with that. Queens, raising the button, fold. Alright. What's he three bet with? He's a six percent three bet. I have three bet ranges, jacks to kings, ace, king suited, queen, jack off, which is an odd hand to three bet. So he has some ace, king. He has some big pocket pairs. Um, he has not faced a four bet in the hundred and fifty hands we have against him. I probably just simply four bet here in position. Take it up to. Six dollars, something like that, about two and a half X. What would two and a half be? Two and a half would be. Hang on, I got a calculator. Six seventy-five. So yeah, a little more between six and six seventy-five is probably good. Go to six, little small, but the the smaller it is, the stronger it usually looks. Which is not necessarily a bad thing, queens do want some protection, cuz if you have ace, king, or something, though, a reasonable amount of the time, you know, an ace or king comes in that flop, and you are in trouble. You're not gonna know how to proceed even being in position. He just folds, that's fine. Um. He probably had a queen, jack off, um type hand, um also, remember, my range looks real wide here on the button. Um so he may just attack that naturally, so alright. Fours, oh, skip the hand, fours. I will open those and cut off, fold around. Queen, queen, gotta raise that, fold around. Back to the rackets. Seventy-five, I don't, you know, when I'm when I'm out of position, certainly when I'm not closing the action, I I want to three bet these. Um if you're not three betting these, if I was in the big blind against a real loose player, I'd consider calling like this, cuz you want to protect your trekking range or your calling range. Um you also wanna give these real loose players here an incentive to not mess with you too badly. Um this, I think, is a mandatory four bet, I'm sorry, three bet, uh go four X, cuz you're out of position, about three dollars. Two seventy, I did a couple of small little raises here, I think both of them were the aces. Don't like that, don't like that, I think I just held my own towel. Fold and fold, alright, that is fine, would you not mind taking that down? Not at all, king, queen suited. Raise up. Calling the big blind from a loose player. Five, six, five. Uh neither of us are gonna have any fives in our range. Opening from hijack, I probably don't have much other than pocket fives, I mean, I have pocket sixes on this board, I have some ace five, I'd have all the the suited ace fives, there's only two left. Um he may have a couple more fives, still has some six, five, some seven, five, some five, four. Stuff like that, he probably actually hits this board a little bit better. Um I'm trying to be more active at C betting when checked to. So I probably fire out about, you know, eighty cents here. Alright, I check behind, it's a good board for him, I don't mind that. Alright, hey, that's okay. Um whether he had it or not, though, it was a good board for him, uh particularly once the nine came, he has all the seven eights, he has at least a suited seven eights, uh he has a bunch of nines. Alright, that's fine. Queen two suited. Um again, not a great hand, but on the button open, you have to try to steal with some of these hands, like you have to hammer this button. Ninety. Calls the type, put in the small blind, again, you don't love that. Uh alright, so guys love calling with aces. So assuming this checks to me, I I simply just have to check behind. Second pair, that's fine. Well, he could have led some diamond combos, I don't know what he would lead in this situation, I would not leave lead diamonds here, um I mean, on the flop, that is. Check, cuz you're happy to check down, that's fine. So that's tough, so he's betting three quarters pot in your rivered two pair. What would he check flop, check turn with, and bet big on the river that you lose to? He's a tightish player, I mean, he certainly has a suited combo as a queen ten, that's only two hands. Suited combos of ace ten, that's three hands. I have to assume he's three betting some ace queen, he should be three betting ace queen from the small blind. What was that, five hands he beat? You lose at the sets. You lose to king, jack, you lose to any random flush that he was just hoping we um we would he could check and we bluff. Or is he firing at it with a weird ace or something, though, just trying to steal the pot? We could range him out and and try to figure that out, but the question here is, are you good twenty-nine percent of the time, and and with two pair on this board? Probably. Um that it might be close. Uh I think this is a call, though. I do call, I'll guess D's and A's, like an ace, jack. Alright. So he actually turned the nut flush, checked, hoping I would bet. So you you look at a hand like this as a loss, but you also probably got away with it from the absolute minimum. You know, you you checked the flop when it wasn't good for you. You checked the turn when it didn't get any better for you, it probably got worse, and the river, you happen to just get you happen to improve just enough in the river where it cost you, and 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 that's okay. King eight. Um probably the hand, again, we can check our chart. King eight in small blind, it's gonna be a mixed strategy, so ooh, king eight in small blind, we show us a raise, um alright, what do we do? Do raise, he's four, he steals eighty percent of the time. He calls, alright. So you have backdoor straight draw, backdoor flush draw, not a whole lot else, um you have aces and queens in your range, you have ace queen. Uh again, he's not three, he's not three betting thirty hands, but I gotta assume he three bets aces, queens, ace, queen. So you certainly have a nut advantage, you probably have a range advantage, just cuz you're gonna be raising with more aces, and he's gonna be calling behind with with more weaker hands, figuring, I again, that he would three bet the best of them. Probably a range bet of about eighty cents. Alright. So and that's fine, he calls, and he could have an ace, he could have a queen, it doesn't matter at this point, um even if you improve on the turn, it's be hard to get him to fold an ace if that's what he has. So you've improved to essentially a gut shot to a ten. Uh hoping I check this, check. Dollar eighty. Um you need twenty-four percent equity to call. Uh there are four tens left, meaning you only get a ten about eight percent of the time on the river. Um to call here, you'd have to figure it out, I'm not the best at doing this math out of my head. Um so about three times it, so you'd have to get roughly, you know, their six dollars or something, another guy on the river. Um when you do hit. Alright, it's probably a fold, you're just not getting a good price. Uh how do you bet a dollar or something, though? Eighteen percent equity is a lot closer, I mean, it it's hard. Um there are just so many hands he has here that are going to be strong. Um even, also remember, if he had a ten comes and you hit it, he has some kings in his range, some king, queen, and stuff, king, jack. Um that you're gonna have chopping with, so you don't even run all those times, so this is a fold. I call, I don't like that. Alright. And I gotta check fold river. Probably not a great so I bet flop. He calls, which blind to blind makes sense. When I check turn, but it gets worse for him, for his specific hand, he shouldn't bet here. Yeah, I think it's a mistake on his part, um. Wonder if I had fired a second barrel? Well, I think it's a mistake for me to call the turn, I'll tell you that, I was absolutely not getting the correct price to do that, and that was an error. Um he probably shouldn't have bet, you know, his his tens are very marginal made hand on this board, though, he probably should've just checked it down and been happy. Ten jacket clubs. Called from, I assume it's the same player, four-handed, um tight button. It's a middle card board that's gonna hit a lot of calling players' ranges. You have top pair and a gut shot. Let's rephrase, you have a marginal top pair and a gut shot, where he could even call behind with queen ten, king ten, ace ten. Uh I'm sorry, uh queen, jack, king, jack, ace, jack, at least the, you know, that six suited hands that would go there. Um. This is probably a pretty good board to check, if you're gonna bet it, you gotta bet it big, something like a dollar seventy. Probably just a good spot to check. And check call, if he bets, call, check. Uh he bets two thirds pot. Well, I don't think he can fold top pair here, especially considering that you saw him play the tens like this, um previously, so this should be a call, good. A nine. Would I, I would've checked, and I probably would've checked the nine on the flop regardless. It would've been in second pair, it would've still been a bad board, I wouldn't wanna bet. It's not good enough to bet polarized, and it's not bad enough to bet polarized, so a nine, I would've just checked on the flop, though, so I can still have nines. Would he have bet a nine if he was checked to? Probably not, he shouldn't on a board like this. He could have a single jack, he could just purely be firing at it, he could have. I don't think he has ten eight, I mean, he could have ten eight, um. Well, anyway, I think I can keep checking here. Does he ever have a nine? He'd basically just have have to have ten nine exactly. There's two suited combos of that left, he had nine eight also, he could have nine eight, there's also two suited combos of that. I mean, he might do an ace, nine, two, there's two suited combos of that. He's not gonna play an offsuit nine. I mean, did he, did he did he have pocket nines, did he have pocket sevens or something, no, pocket seven should raise, pocket jacks might not raise a flop, just as his top set, but seven should raise on a wet board. He probably either has a jack or is just firing at it, he beat a lot of the jacks. I mean, this, I think this is a call, though. Alright. Well, now you bet it up, so now if he bets the after call, cuz you're chopping, if he has pocket nines, if he quieted up, good for him. Check. I'm guessing he has something like eights or something, though, just firing the draw and missed it, I don't think he had a nine, particularly to check here. Certainly didn't have a jack. So thi- this is a very good lesson I hope everyone takes, is check some marginal made hands. When you check out of position with marginal made hands, you induce bluffs like this, and this guy just fired off only twenty, twenty-five big blinds, whatever it was, but he just fired those into our pot with absolutely no kind of hint. Um. If I had bet the river, he wouldn't have called, so I don't know if that was the best play, but certainly, I I if he bets small, I guess you would've had to hope you were getting value from a nine to raise, a jack you're just chopping with and just wasting money on rake. Yeah, I don't know, alright, let's go. Queen, jack, button. Trying to think, I I mask all these players' names for anonymity, but I'm trying to think if I know who this would have been, and it's somebody I want to attack. I I'm not gonna flat call here, so if it's in a VPip thing, it's probably something I three bet. You know, the guy's opening. Where is he, hijack, pre-flop? Or is it raised first in? Hijack, or he's? Yeah, hijack. So I would, I guess they just call middle position here. Ah, his raised first in is twenty-five, um. Probably not, i- i- it's it's not tight, but it's not a range loose enough that you want to be exploiting. So I I should just fold this, I don't like this at all. Uh I'm assuming I have three bet here, this wouldn't be in here, so button versus hijack, raised first in, queen, jack off here, it's just a fold, so I think it is a fold. Um. Alright, I do get after it here, I notice this hundred percent folded three bet. I mean, there's only three opportunities, I mean, he missed a little, but not a lot, and we get one through, and um it's important in these cases not to play so tight that people know what you're doing. You know, you're at the late range, you're at the skill level here where guys are still not playing polarized poker. Meaning a much better bluff here would be like an ace four suited, ace three suited, you know, seven, six suited, ace ten off, something like that, uh either you have a blocker, or you have very strong potential. Um this is that middle part of the range, or or outside of it, or it just should be folded. Queen ten, uh jack ten suited, raise. Call the big blind. Second pair, backdoor flush. Um a board with two connected suited Broadway cards, always it's fairly easy to hit. I'm probably fine with the check here, it's a marginal made hand. I mean, we have aces, kings, queens, jacks. The suited combos of queen, jack. He has the suited queen, jack. Probably three bets queens, might call with jacks. So he should have the nut advantage here. So his range better, I'm thinking he's gonna like the call with a lot of high cards, what is he? Ooh, from the big blind, and he's VPip-ing thirty-five percent from the big blind, you gotta have some pairs, some big cards in there to to get to that number, so he's missed a decent amount of the time, I think it's probably a check behind, this is the the two suited connected Broadway cards is good for a lot of ranges, alright. I don't generally mind C betting in position, guys don't check raise enough. Um yeah, he just folds, that's okay. Probably from a board and range analysis point of view, um it's not a bad spot to check. But I I will tell you, I've been working on C betting more, particularly in position. So hopefully I got greedy there. So I remember this hand, just remember sitting here policy and thinking crap. Should I squeeze here? You know, I probably played, I'm seeing some of these numbers are probably a hundred and sixty hands or something, a thirty NL at this point, and there's not a lot of poker. Um looking at this guy, you know, this guy's folding a three at eighty-three percent of the time, if he had anything great, he would've three bet himself with eight percent, so you could fold him out. Is this guy here gonna fold your three bet? Maybe, just cuz this guy here is in the middle. Um I think I choose to just call behind. Uh which isn't terrible, um in a lot of positions like this, though, I think we gotta be squeezing here a little bit more and take initiative. Uh if he squeezed, I would go to, again, four X, like three sixty. Make it tough for these guys to call out of position. Uh you don't wanna fold, so either calling or or squeezing is fine. I do call. So you're going four ways, you hit an eight, you're gonna love it, uh but you don't hit an eight. So what you wanna be able to do, though, is when you're in position, is play villains again, uh play hands against one villain that just calls too much, and is too out of a range, and misses too many boards. So particularly with three people and two Broadway cards, you know, this is something that these guys are going to nail. So I basically, if it's bet to me, I have to fold. Yep, alright. So that's the value of squeezing there, is that you probably, you could have gotten him heads up, he could've missed this flop, and and, you know, I would've C bet it, and could've gotta fold. More aces. Oh, I think I remember this one, this is fun, so I I limp the aces here. This is against a player, again, I don't know who's who these guys are, but tight enough, twenty, twenty-three, thirteen, tight-ish and passive-ish. Um so it's not a bad place to be passive in return. I'm just concerned if I raise this here, is he just gonna fold, be folded, that's a disaster, I wanna give him a chance to hit some type of pair or something, and put some money into the pot. You know, not a real scary board, uh wanted to simply check. Beautiful, full pot bet, even better, so he can have any hand there, I mean, he has all the combos of six, five, ten, six, ten, five. Um he just literally has, he probably, he raises some hands, but you know, he has nearly every poker hand out there. So he's missed the board the majority of this time, and the hands that he does have are likely one pair, so I'm just gonna call. Let him keep bluffing. He probably doesn't have a six, I mean, I I I don't know what else to say, he has such a wide range. Um there's no reason to think he would've bet a six on the flop, so I check again. Oh, same bet, that means he doesn't have anything. Or he has a five. Whenever guys choose like a flop, like a a pot-sized flop bet, then a the same-sized bet on the turn, they they do not have a strong hand. Call again. By chance, he had seven eighty got there. Check, couldn't get into fire river. What do you have, probably nothing? That's why you, that's why you gotta play sneakily sometimes, if I had raised this, he probably would've folded pre-flop. Um I mean, you could do the math. If I had raised and he called, you know, as soon as I see that floppy fold, so probably got a little bit more money out of him this way. Open the king, jack off on the button, call, small blind. Alright, that's a good result, um top two, uh wet board. Alright, that's a good result, um, top two, uh, wet board. Um, somebody might've been polarized, so if it's checks to you, you probably wanna bet about a dollar forty, dollar fifty. I gotta work on my bet sizing in some of these pots, because I think, you know, analyzing it later, I'm good, but in game. It's not great. Calls a small bet. So hopefully at least they have the common sense to size up now and go to two forty, something like that, two sixty. Still a little small, a little bigger but small. In fairness, I'm trying to get called in perhaps some cases by a single king or ace, I'm sorry, a king or a jack. Um, a king would call a bigger bet, a jack probably would fold at the second barrel, particularly if the first one was bigger. So, tough little spot. Well, the queen brought a lot of hands in, so if he checks to me, I just gotta check behind to be happy with my two pair. Um. Certainly he would play his flush draws this way, he would play a king queen this way. Um, yeah, I'm fine, I'll check on the river. Uh, I guess he shows down a, a modest king. That is quite a modest king, so, um, would a king have called a little bit bigger bet, probably on both streets? So we gotta keep that in mind here for next time. Ace jack. Alright, raise it up. I guess three bet. Alright, I don't think we faced one of these yet. So, he's three betting in position to like three and a half X. Um, let's check minutes here. So this is the guy earlier. Three bet range is jacks to kings, ace king, queen jack, offsuit. So, one, two, three, four, so four of the five hands and again, there's, there's not equal number of combos, but four of the five hands here are value that we don't. Like. Um, he does not appear to be a maniac. The bigger sizing is very possibly a tell. Uh, if he went to regular two seventy or something though, you get a better chance to just call. If he went to two. Twenty, it looks suspicious and if he goes bigger, it looks suspicious, so. Uh, I think out of positioning against an unknown player is to just a fold. I call, um, the ace jack suited is certainly. Strong enough. I think it's the right player type and I just don't think we know this guy well enough. I must've had some read that he was trying to mess around a little bit and that the ace jack could be good, so let's see. Yeah, here's the problem, he's gotta check fold, or check call on the flop. He went all in, I didn't notice how small his stack was. Well. I, I, I should've folded pre-flop. I don't have many nice things to say about my play here. I mean. Really there, let's go all the way back. I mean, there's your error, you should've just folded. Yeah, so you gotta look at these guys' stack sizes. Ah, there just wasn't enough money there for, to, um, maybe if you make a straight, you weren't gonna get paid, a flush, you weren't gonna get paid. Alright, definitely when I see the size of his stack, I should've folded, so. Um. I call. He's gotta have an overpair. Yeah, alright. Definitely a mistake, thankfully a small one, um, but still has twenty-four big blinds or something we just gave away. Queen jack suited isn't open, I usually like to make an extra big blind when I see a guy like this post. So probably a mistake in making that smaller. Well, you're going four ways, which you never love when you're in a great, um, you're, you have a hand that flops great, um. So here you have a gutshot backdoor flush draw, two overcards. A board that connects reasonably well with, kinda everybody's range. Um. I think even four ways, I c-bet this, because guys are gonna have so many high cards and pairs again that, that miss this stuff. Ah, but if you c-bet it, you gotta go big like two forty or something though, what do I do? I c-bet small. I don't know if that's the right play, I think you either go big or you just check. I don't think I agree with that. I get check raised. Well, had you bet two forty or something at this thing, it'd be harder for this guy to check raise and I guess that's one of the reasons you do it. But that's not even a check raise, he's in position, that's just a raise raise. He raised smallish. I mean, I bet small, he raised only two and a half X. So only nineteen percent equity to continue, which I'm sure you have, so this should be a call. You do call, fine. Eight. So check, check, turn. Well, i- i- is, is he raising with a diamond draw that missed? Uh, he certainly, if you bet, you certainly get an ace high diamond draw to fold, king high diamond draw. Once the board paired, he may not fire turn. So the, the question here is, if he bluff. He's gotta fold everything that's not a pair. So he's calling with any ten, although a ten may have continued to fire turn, um, if he had a set, I mean, he turned a full house. If he had two pair, I mean, it'd have to be ten six, if he had ten eighty, it's quads, um. Which would've been a full house anyway, he would've continued betting. If you bet here, can you fold that, say, pocket? Nines or something that got frisky? Probably. Probably. So I don't actually think it's a bad spot to stab, go to like seven fifty or something, three quarters pot. You guys let me know in the comments here what you think that you would do in this spot. I can't, I, I can't figure out if it's a good bluff spot or not. If he had something ultra strong, even like a good pair or something, you gotta figure he would've. Bet turn. What do I do? Alright, hey, I mean, it worked. Um. Yeah, I mean, I, I think, as I mentioned, I think any good pair continues to bet turns, you can probably eliminate most of it is from his range, when you do that, it's less with. Uh, pocket sevens and stuff that are not happy to see. Me call a bet with a ten out there. Alright. King queen off. There are a couple guys who make these small, like weird raises. So, you know, you, you, against a small raise, you have to defend even wider, so king queen off is certainly just a call, I don't think it's a hand I ever. Three bet, um, maybe with suited, you get three betted, I just, I'm happy to see a flop. Great, always checking the pre-flop razor. That's two thirds pot, um. Probably just a call, um, not knowing the guy, I mean, he certainly has ace king in his range, he has kings, eights in his range, probably fives. Um, so he has nut hands that beat you. Um, occasionally I'll try to play around with some of these top pair check raises, I don't do that a whole lot, but I, I'm happy just here. Um, as he may like his hand, I'm happy to hear just a call. So I have a lot of middle cards in my range, so it's probably a better card for me than for him. But still, I think you check, what does he do? Check. I mean, he probably doesn't. Have a five that he raises with than checks. I'm sorry, that he bets, that he raises with pre-flop, c-bets flop. It has to be ace five, and there's two suited combos of that, so I'm not worried about two combos of hands. So, to value bet here or not, he certainly could have someone like queen, jacks, tens, nines, that would call a small bet. Um. I think ace king would've continued to fire, because that board didn't really improve stuff. So I like a small bet here, probably about a third pot, trying to get called by something like an underpair, it's been pretty marginal, so something like one. Sixty. It just looks like such a bluff when he raises and he doesn't go particularly big either. It's loading my second hand on the villain. I, I think when you're calling from the big blind, you're just so high up in your range. The only thing you're literally worried about is two combinations of ace five. Everything else is a king that you either chop with, because I think he continues to bet ace king. He would've continued to bet pocket eights, pocket fives, pocket kings. It's either ace five or a bluff, considering you lose to two combos and beat. A lot of potential bluff combos. I think this is a call. Airball bluff too, um. I, I mean, from, from his perspective, it's real easy for me to have a king, um. He also has absolutely no showdown value. So I, I think it was a good call on my part, clearly it's a little results oriented in the analysis, but, um. Alright, keep going, how many more we got left? Uh, we're almost done, almost out the video for you guys. Open fives, call from big blind. Loose player, uh, is gonna have a lot of hands and miss particularly on a paired board, um, you do take away some of the diamond combinations you may continue with. Uh, if he checks, he probably wanna fire, the board you're gonna fire it frequently, so probably about sixty-five cents. Good, and he just folds, that's great. King eight from cutoff. To open, defend from big blind from a little laggy player, not crazy. Two nine four, he's forming a c-bet seventy-one percent of the time, which is relatively high number, again, c-bet sixty-five cents. Once he calls, he's gonna have a lot of middling pairs like sevens, eights. Eight, seven, sixes, fives, occasionally some combos of nines, there's no real draw. Five, three, ace, three, ace, five. If you bet here, I'm assuming he checks. Oh no, he leads, never mind. So if he bets here, do you ever fire again? Uh, if he had a nine, he's not folding. If he has like a pocket eights or something, though, he really shouldn't fold, because it's less likely if you have a nine. Well, with him leading, I don't have nothing, you gotta fold. Well, when they do that, it makes your, your life actually easier, so don't lead in these spots, guys, um. You don't know, he could've very likely just had air or two overcards and was trying to bluff me and then, hey, that's fine, it worked. Ace six, sometimes when a guy opens limps, I'll limp behind in the button, it depends on how much I think these guys are going to raise. Um. Not knowing or not seeing the player names, you know, and it's probably a mixed strategy for my part, if I think I can get it through and see a flop for a single big blind, I'll do that. Uh, if not, I'll raise to four big blinds and try to isolate and. Get there. Ah, you see, yep, that's what we don't wanna do. That's why you don't limp, because then guys do that. I do defend. Should that be a defend? So I mean, his small blind. Range. Against a low jack limp and button limp behind is going to be relatively wide, um. Uh, are you, you, you're in position, you essentially need to begin thirty-three percent of the time to call and you probably are, so I mean, this is certainly a, a borderline hand. Um. Let's see what happens. Alright, so a board that's very good for a calling range, not re- as good for the raising range as it is for me just sitting there and calling behind. So let's keep that in mind. Oh, I might run a bluff on this one, alright. So he fires just under half pot, I think I remember this one. You have here probably all the combos of queen jack, some of the combos of seven, six, at least the suited ones. You have ten nine, nine eight, maybe, the ten eight is probably a little loose, you have all. You probably raise the pocket pairs pre-flop. We have a lot of flush, uh, I'm sorry, a lot of straight draws, a lot of flush draws. Um, as well as all the two pair combos, great place, I think, to raise. So I think if I'm correct, I raised to something like, well, what would I do? I would probably get three X or at least, or maybe even a little bit more. Five fifty, something like that, five eighty-two. That's a very good spot where we are playing our range, our hand here sucks. We are playing the range and the fact that it connects better with my call, limp, calling range than his raising range. He probably had a king jack, ace king, something like that, he probably had a decent hand to start. Our range is better for that. Kings, everybody was folding when I got these hands. Eights. It's interesting, so you're three bet. Is it ten percent three bet? What have we seen him showdown? Oh, it's the same guy we see, we keep saying. I don't remember the session specifically, I mean, you, you play a lot of poker, things blur together, but when a guy starts getting after you like this a little bit though, it's hard to. Fold. Your, your pocket ace could just purely be good here, um, certainly if he has a queen jack off, I mean, it's two overcards, I guess with overcards they are, don't matter to a certain extent, but. Um, probably this is a defend. Which I do. Two, four, five. Ah, this is where you get yourself in, in tough spots. So based on this flop, you know, he has sixteen combos of ace king, sixteen combos of ace queen. Um. Maybe at least a suited combos of ace jack and ace ten, at least a suited combos of king queen. He has more of those hands than he has, you know, aces, kings, queens, jacks, tens or thirty hands. He has more combos of ace king and ace queen alone than that, so he's got at least fifty percent misses. Anything with an ace has an equity to draw with three, so let's not ignore that. Think there's at least for one street to call. Alright. Doesn't change anything. Check. Check, oh, you might have him here. Often when I review the hands, I let it go a week or two weeks or a month, just when I get back, I forget everything about it and I remember how this one ends. So question here at this point is, who has more flushes? Um. So what do I do? So I check. So is your overpair good twenty-seven percent of the time? Um, he's not still playing aces, kings, queens on a board like this. Um, he doesn't really have a four, maybe ace four, that was essentially a three bet bluff. So he kinda has. To have a flush or bust, flush or bust. Decent board for a guy to bluff, when you check to him three times. So I think I call, I think he showed. He shows that. Alright, I don't think that was played incorrectly, I don't think that river call was necessarily bad, um. A lot of players would've double barreled that ace king on the turn. Uh, because my hand, he knows exactly what it looked like. Exactly what it looked like. King jack suited. Little min raise here, I could either call or three bet it, he's falling to three bets a hundred percent of the time so far, I mean, only in, well, two opportunities. So maybe it's a, a, a three bet from that perspective. I just call, and calling is fine. Pot sized bet, just get out of the way, that's fine. Ace king on the button, raise, fine. King queen. So I'm in the earliest position and someone limps, I always wanna raise, I'm gonna make that four big blinds, love it. He calls. He's playing a wide, wide range here so far, so he's gonna miss this board a lot. So I'm gonna c-bet this board against this player every time for again, you know, somewhere around a dollar, third pot. Well, now you have to just check the turn, you could have any pair, you could have any piece of this, you could have any draw. It's just not worth firing another barrel on a guy that's very likely to get a call. If you have two overcards, you can get there sometimes in the river, you get there, what, twelve percent of the time in the river? No, you could eat, yeah, twelve percent of the time in the river. Eight, nine, nope, no straight there. That's almost pot, get out of the way, alright. Man, I play a lot of hands. It's only fifty-six hands, I don't know why it feels like so many. Alright. Uh, king, nine. Well, it's a three-better fold, because somebody said Vpip, Vpip blessed, I gotta three-bet it, so against a player like this, that's, ah, I think that's just a fold, I don't think it's a three-bet, what do our charts say? Cut-off versus hijack. It's on the cusp, I mean, it's not a terrible three-bet candidate, um. Assuming that's what I do there. See, that's terrible, you gotta, I call, you, cold calling your three-bet on the button, so it's hard to arrange him except for middling pocket pairs. Um, jacks, tens, nines, eights, stuff like that, um. He didn't call, so, okay. So based on the range we gave him, jacks aren't folding, tens aren't folding, nines are crushing you, eights might fold. Um, if they have spades in them, they're less likely to fold. Do you c-bet? Hmm, he's only folding a c-bet twenty-nine percent of the time so far. I think this is a check. I fire. And he folds, so I don't, we got the result we wanted, I think that was a check there though, I think that was a mistake on my part, um. I mean, he's a, he's a looser player, I should think of that, when a guy's cold calling a three-bet. If he's tight, he has hands like that, though if he's loose, I guess he could have anything, meaning if his, if his range is still that wide, he's yet to fold with a three-bet, again, not have any opportunities, but, um. Alright, we're looking at his stats here, I like that a little bit more. Ace, the jack. Um, same player again from the big blind, I just think it's a flat call, I don't think you three-bet this. What do charts say? Big blind facing, low jack raise first in, ace, jack off, a call, alright. Good, alright. Top pair, top kicker. Uh, certainly seems to be a type of player that might, bluff away here a little bit, so I'm very much inclined to check and, and let him bluff, I don't wanna check raise here, I don't wanna scare him off. Checks behind, can't love that. So I wonder here when a second jack comes, is there any? I think you check again and try to let him bluff. Um, I think if he, you know, tens, nine, it's eights or something though, he would have probably bet the flop anyway. Um, if you bet, I just think you're gonna fold out so many hands, that it's probably worth just checking and letting him try to bluff you. Good. Which he does, fantastic. Question here is, do you, check, raise, or give the guy at least a fighting chance to, catch up on the river? I do check raise, and he just folds, and that's fine, sometimes you can check that, and sometimes, you know, a king comes on the river, you had king, queen, or something in his hand, you can catch it and get a bet out of him, but, I'm not too worried about that. Queens. Raise it up, again, same player calls behind. Big blind calls. I've started just kinda firing at these flops. Um, even in two players, if you bet kinda small, this, this flop is just as scary, for them as it is for you, you have all the suited aces in your range, you have eights, fives, maybe not fours. Yeah. So fire into it. Third pot. Call, call. Fire again. Calls. Now, gotta check this river. And gotta fold, no, I call. What the hell did he show up with? Well, this is the type of player profile you want to let bluff. Um, if you come back here at the beginning. He calls behind. Calls behind on a small bet. When the river gets scary, you let him bluff and you call, so good move, so. Guys are gonna break there, I gotta run here, there's a hand or two left, I'll have to review later. Thanks for sticking with me, alright, we'll see ya.